Councilmember Ibo is absent. Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budashevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
We have a call.
All right, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us looking for a motion on that agenda. Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you, looking for a second? Go ahead, David.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We do have a consent agenda, I'll read that into the record at this time. First item is the approval of the minutes from the following meetings. Meetings, City Council meeting, regular work session from February 7th, regular council meeting from that same date, council regular work session on February 9th. Next item is approval of the list of license applications submitted to the City Council by the city clerk, and that is on file in her office. And then, an adoption of a resolution accepting donations, adoption of a resolution concurring with proposed watershed boundary changes. That's it for the consent agenda. Looking for a motion on that? Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, looking for a second? Here. Tracy?
I'll second.
You're gonna get it with that, yeah. All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Got me nervous. Look at that. Open forum.
Since this is the last council meeting, right?
Yeah.
For, so shouldn't Councilmember LaRoche kind of take the lead on a lot of these?
I think she has on it.
I have been.
She has, she's good.
She's done every one.
Good.
Really didn't give her an option.
Oh, good.
Now, the test will be, John, at the very end of the meeting tonight.
Oh, yeah. I don't, I don't think we're gonna...
Two kinds of people, the quick and the dead.
All right, do we have anyone here wishing to speak during open forum? We do. All right, if you can give that to Chrissy.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Bolash, 4060 Hampshire. I am here today on behalf of the Sacred Heart Council of Catholic Women. I don't know if you guys remember, last year I came here.
Sure.
We're trying it again, we're trying to do a, celebrating a women's owned business expo on April 22nd. Thank you, John Thutter, for getting us Henepin County. We're, so like, last council meeting, like, women owned businesses at the federal level, the federal government is trying to get at least 5% of all contracting with women owned businesses. The federal government hasn't met that metric. And like, as a women owned business myself, like, I don't know how to, like, how do I put a proposal together for government, right? And so, I'm, I'm looking for you guys to come to the event. I'm looking for women owned businesses. Last year, we had about 25 women owned businesses, we're hoping between, again, 25 to 30. It's open to the public, anybody's invited. But I'm hoping if you guys have any resources about how do people contract with government, both at the federal, state, and local governments. I know there's probably a lot of people in the community that don't know how to do that. And so, I'm hoping if anybody can help us with that. And we're also looking again for Henepin County to come in. Hopefully, the Small Business Administration. Small business is actually, I've got a two-year degree in small business management. Most businesses fail within the first two years. Our community, obviously, is one of those communities that typically the mom and the pop stars come from, right? And like, how do we create a community, especially for women, to have businesses and have opportunities? So, if anybody can help, you're more than welcome to. To get ahold of me, you can email me, Bonnie, B-O-N-N-I-E, bolash, B-O-L-A-S-H, at gmail dot com. My phone number is 763-537-4955, if you want to help make this event awesome. It was, the women that came last year were awesome and amazing, and it was beautiful. The mayor of Robbinsdale came. We just really needed the crowds, so we needed help with that. But it was a fun event.
What is the date to that event?
It's April 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So hopefully, you guys won't be able to make it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing no one approach, we will move on to the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is the disbursements of $25,000 or greater. I'll read those into the record. Health Partners Inc. for February health insurance premiums is $126,587. West Metro Fire Rescue District has an amount of $123. And $123,281. City of Brooklyn Park for 2022 annual fees for HRG administration is $88,280. Gillen Chevrolet Cadillac for the new pickup truck that replaces vehicle, or pickup number 307, for $55,895. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for 2022 CIP payment. And final bill is $604,779. Mansfield Oil Company for fuel for our fleet is $25,535. Met Council for wastewater services for March, $138,936. I can say dollars one time, and it would work just as well, when it may be easier to listen to. Nuss Truck and Equipment, new truck to replace vehicle number 314, $136,117. West Metro Fire Rescue District for February contribution to West Metro Fire, $123,281. Minpara for the employee and city required contributions for pay date 2/3/2023, $67,281. IRS for electronic payments. Federal and FICA withholding taxes for pay date 2/3/2023 is $67,427. Total disbursements of over $25,000 is $1,557,402.17. Are there questions on any of these? Go ahead, Nancy.
For the Golden Valley Joint Water Commission, was that the total for the whole year? Or was that a portion? It says final 2022 bill, I was just curious, that's...
Go ahead.
Thanks, Adam.
Mayor, Councilmember LaRoche, I believe that that also included a previous bill that was not past due, but that had not been paid by the city, so that wasn't just a single amount.
There was a...
There was a previous balance that was included in that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on these? All right, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the list of disbursements over $25,000.
Go ahead, Therese.
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, next, the council will consider a resolution appointing Councilmember Kamish as Crystal's representative on the West Metro Fire Rescue District Board of Directors. Our city manager, Adam Bell, is here to address the council.
Mayor members of the council, this originally came up at the first meeting of the year, January 3rd, and was, this decision was continued to the 17th. At that time, Councilmember LaRoche was appointed for the two-year term with a understanding that it would be evaluated at a future date, or after about a year, to... The concern at the time was the ending of the term, it's the same as the council term. Since that time, shortly after that, as the council is aware, Councilmember LaRoche provided a resignation due to her relocation. And so now, that seat is open again. The council now has to appoint a new representative to the fire district board. And the mayor had suggested Councilmember Kamish to serve as that. A couple of the items, one, her term is not, it's overlapping, so it doesn't present the problem, the concern that was brought up at the last meeting. Also, the, her public safety background being part of the Crime Prevention Board was seen as an asset. So with that, that was the recommended appointment. There is a resolution for that. Any other discussion that the council would like to have?
Is this a one-year term, or a two-year term?
The term is for the remainder of the two-year regular term.
Okay.
What was discussed last time, and one of the, city attorney Gilcrest looked into it, and there was nothing in the board bylaws, or the city rules, that would prevent the council from changing the appointment at any date, at any point, as long as the board, you know, accepts it, which they don't have any... There's no legal prohibition as to the council doing that, what was discussed at the meeting on the 17th. So the, it's up to the council how long that term is. The term itself is a two-year term.
Okay. But I thought we had agreed that Nancy's, Nancy's appointment was a one-year term. And so I'm wondering why they changed now?
So can I point a clarification? We talked about doing that. We didn't make that part of the motion.
Oh.
Honestly, I think if we go that route, we can still do that. I'd like to revisit the conversation, because I can't recreate the conversation in my mind, the logic behind it. So I need a refresher on kind of what was going on in that conversation. Because to me, it just doesn't, it's a completely different topic than this. In the, in the sense that it's not about who we elect, it's about how long the term is, so... I don't...
I think it's one and the same, but I'm willing to separate the length of the appointment and the person that's appointed.
Yeah, I think that's probably, it keeps things a little more clear.
I know Councilmember Budashevsky's had lots of experience. You've been on the...
Oops.
Okay, you've been on the fire board before?
I have, yes.
And you wish to continue, or wish to be appointed again?
I would.
I would make a motion to appoint Councilmember Budashevsky to whatever length of term we decide on.
All right. I thought we talked about, I thought we talked about having some diversity within that particular board. And that's, that's what I tried to honor as well. And now you want to...
Well, we agreed on Councilmember LaRoche being appointed, and now she is no longer eligible for that. So I think we should look at it again.
You know, when it comes, when it comes to Tracy, in terms of what responsibilities she has, she was a little bit light on the responsibilities. And honestly, when it comes to, when it comes to, to... How do I say this? I would, I think we're gonna have better representation with Tracy. We had a partial term that got cut short, because, you know, that person wasn't able to make it on time. Because that's, that's a very, very high-level meeting, which we're coming together from different agencies. And I want to be able to have somebody that I can rely on to show up and be there on time. And I think that's very important.
I agree with you.
Mayor Adams.
Sir.
One of my concerns with Brendan being appointed to the fire board was his, he hadn't been through a budget cycle. And so I would really, personally, it's, I think, it's, you have three people here that have, you know, that are on the, on the council, that have been through the budget process, have been, have, you know, have some experience dealing with the fire budget, you know, in whole. And so I would prefer that you would pick one of them, instead of just, you know, just, you know, sending... Wait, I'm not done. So before you, you know, decide that, you know, because Councilmember Kamish is light on her duties, that she should be the obvious choice. I mean, we can certainly rearrange, you know, commission assignments, we have that ability. We certainly can kind of like, change people, individuals' responsibilities. But you have three individuals that have been through the budget process. Why not pick one of them?
Okay, I was trying to honor the conversation we had before. I tried to honor everything that was going on with the appointment with Nancy.
Right.
Having some diversity on the fire board was something that was very, very desirable. In terms of the budget process with the, with the fire department, that happens primarily inside the fire department, with the district. What we see here, and what we go through here, we go through a very quick process. It's not like our budget process, where we're spending a month working and trying to figure out, you know, are we going to increase services, or are we going to decrease services? That's not the process we go through, we have a fire district that handles that. The chiefs over at West Metro Fire take the brunt of that planning. And to your point about the budget, I think it doesn't have the weight that I think you think it does.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Budashevsky, you were on the board when Chief Larson was hired, correct? Fire Chief Larson?
I was part of the inter, intergating process, yeah, and made the recommendation to the, to the city.
I think, I think you have the experience that we need, representation-wise, on the fire board. You've done it before, you've picked Sarah.
I mean, I kind of take offense to that, like, everybody obviously starts somewhere. You know, his first term, he was not a person of experience on it. And, you know, we too, as a city, that we're diverse and inclusive, yet, for some reason, it's kind of, it seems like there's a problem to have female representation on the fire board. I consider myself a strong female, I'm sure you do as well. I have seven children, I know how to take charge and keep things clear. And, you know, I think that if we're gonna say that we're a diverse community, that we should probably, you know, I mean, because, because all of the, the majority of the, the positions of power, as you will, are male-led. You know, we've got a male manager, a city manager, a male mayor, and a male pro town. So I feel like it's kind of important to have female representation on some of the, you know...
So you would support Councilmember Kaiser?
Absolutely, but again, you know, she...
Again, we can, we can rearrange the chairs, you know, at any time, correct?
I would really like to stick to, to dealing with what's open. I don't want to re-race all the appointments.
I mean, I just, yeah. It seems like a lot of rearranging.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on.
Let me, let me make one point, one point, one point, one point, I'm asking one point.
You're out of order.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't even remember what I was gonna say anymore. Let's get back to order, not people just talking whenever they want. Do you know what you're gonna say?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, boy. I was gonna say that if the only issue is diversity on the fire board, then I recommend that Councilmember Kaiser be our appointee. She's been through the budget cycle, she's been, she's a tenured person on this city council. She's more qualified than anybody to sit on it. Also, when I was part of the fire board, it was back during a time of great turmoil. So I was part of the healing process of bringing both cities together. So you may want to consider me inexperienced, but I did have some ability.
I never considered that.
I did, I had, I had some ability in terms of making sure that West Metro continued on as a viable asset to our community, so.
So you think, you think the most experienced person should go on the fire board?
I would think that would be a great choice.
Okay, so I'm the most experienced person with the fire board?
You are?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're gonna appoint yourself?
No, I'm not. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense for me to do that. But I mean, if that's gonna be your standard, honestly, the conversations we had when we appointed Nancy are honored with this appointment. And it's not just about you and your experience. Therese has other responsibilities right now. She's got some pretty good experiences, some very great places that she can be. So do you. You have some great assignments. It makes a lot of sense for Tracy to take this on. I think she has the bandwidth, she's got the experience. And it ticks some of the, some of the things that we were looking for when we assigned Nancy. Go ahead.
I had a question for Tracy. Like, what would be some of the things you did on the Crime Prevention Board you think would relate to the fire board that would, you know, be of experience, that would help you out with the fire board?
Okay, hold on. We're not gonna go through an interview here, but she can answer the question if she'd like. But this isn't going to be an interview that we're gonna just ad hoc throw together. Go ahead. If you'd like.
I mean, is this a discussion that would be pertinent to this meeting? Or is this something we could have? I mean, it, okay, so I guess my, I would say that forming a relationship, obviously, with the police department, helping to bring the community together with the fire, or with the police department, setting up fundraisers, money, creating, you know, money so that we can help purchase equipment for the police department, attending the community events such as Shop with a Cop, you know. So it's really just forming relationships with the community and the police department.
We just had somebody leave the room. Do you know why they left the room? I know exactly why they left the room. The behavior of this council, what's going on right now.
Well, I move that we table this issue, and then maybe we can discuss this at another time.
We have a motion on the floor. Would you like to rescind your motion?
My motion?
Yes.
And was seconded?
It was not seconded.
No, I thought we were still discussing it. So the, we're not, they're not appointing Councilmember Kamish tonight as well, correct? The whole thing is tabled?
I would like, I would like to move forward with the appointment.
I, I make a motion to appoint Councilmember Budashevsky, he's got the experience. He was on, on the fire board during a very turmoil time. He was on the, on the board when they hired Chief Larson. I understand the need for diversity on the fire board, but we have a female chief. I mean, we have women in leadership.
This isn't about West Metro and their makeup. It's about our representative as Crystal.
Okay, well, I, I have a motion on the, on the floor. If we're not going to move forward with appointing Councilmember Kamish, I'm fine to withdraw my motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I can just jump in with a procedural issue.
Sure.
So once a motion is made, as I understand the motion is to adopt the resolution, but replacing the name with Councilmember Budashevsky as the person appointed to the position. I understand that to be your motion?
Sure.
So, Mr. Mayor, you really shouldn't take any further discussion, you know, asking for a second. And if there's no second, then obviously, we're back to further discussion. If there is a second, there is still an opportunity for a motion to be made to table it to a future date. So that's, that's still an option.
So, point of order, question?
Yep.
Motion made, that ends conversation?
It should, it should immediately go to, is there a second? And if there isn't a second, then the, the motion fails, and then you're back to your original discussion. I didn't jump on it initially, because I wasn't sure if it was truly our motion, or just an expression of a...
I was a little unclear too, but that's kind of where it landed. Do we have a second?
I'll second, I have a motion.
All right.
So now you can have further discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that was the point of clarification.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Nancy.
Just a thought, having served a little over a year, with the important terminology and budgets, we have a budget coming up, discussion, very important. We also have had lengthy discussions about this new Diversity and Inclusion Committee, and, which I'm thrilled about. What I'm not thrilled about is seeing the degradation and dismiss, the dismissing of a qualified person because she may not have had the experience that another one has. So I would like to say, as someone who came to be appointed, who had little experience too, but has been through the budget process, it is a lengthy and very detail-oriented position, requiring time, someone who can be there on time and make the meetings. And I have no doubt that most people on this council would be able to do that. But I also want to have a chance for Tracy to take this position with her experience. And it's something she's available to do, and it would not involve a lot of rearranging. Maybe discuss the term of this, but we need to get someone appointed because of this upcoming budget. That is critical. And I think the back and forth, and quite frankly, I'm disappointed of the dismissed, dismissing of a qualified female candidate and not honoring diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you.
Any other comments, any more discussion? All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
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 Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Budashevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kamish.
Nay.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Nay.
Mayor Adams.
Nay.
Motion tied, motion fails.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to nominate my recommendation as written in the agenda. Nancy?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All members in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, say nay.
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 Let's roll call vote.
Councilmember Cummings.
Nay.
Councilmember Kamish.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Nay.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Budashevsky.
Nay.
Motion ties, motion fails.
When is the next fire board meeting?
Chief?
April. First week in April, first Wednesday?
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday of April.
So we could have this resolved by then, right?
Oh, we sure, we sure could. We sure could, yeah. Can't resolve it tonight. Not tonight. Not tonight.
So, Mr. Mayor, technically, it would be appropriate if someone would like to make a motion to continue to a specific future date? If, if that's something you want to do, that way you make sure it comes back on an agenda, which frankly, it would anyway, but technically, that's, that's the more proper way to handle it.
I understand, I do understand. Thought it just might be fun to nominate myself to go on the fire board. Wouldn't that be cute? All right, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item until the next council meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, let's continue to the next council meeting. You know, this is the first time in my history on the council, which is, what, I'm on my 11th year, to where the council has outwardly just told people that they're not qualified to be in this position. It happened to me.
It's happened to me.
And it happened again tonight. So I'd really like to see the behavior of this council change. This is, this is not how we should be conducting business. All right. Next, we have a resolution in reference to Nancy LaRoche. We have our city manager, Adam Bell, to address the council on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As has been discussed, Councilmember LaRoche, this is her last council, council meeting as a member of the Crystal City Council. Before you, there is a resolution commending Councilmember LaRoche for her service to the City of Crystal and the City Council. Mr. Mayor, I, I guess I would ask that you possibly, if you were able to read, read that into the public record.
Sure.
A great demonstration of our thanks to Councilmember LaRoche for her years of service.
It'd be my pleasure. A resolution appointing a member to, oh, that's the wrong one. We'll get there. Resolution commending Councilmember Nancy LaRoche, whereas Nancy LaRoche has served as Crystal City Council Member Section 1 since January 2017. And whereas during her council tenure, she has served as Mayor Pro Tem, the City Council Liaison to Environmental Quality, and Parks and Recreation Commissions, the West Metro Fire Rescue District Board, a member of the Charter Commission as President, Vice President, Secretary of the Economic Development Authority, and whereas Councilmember LaRoche promoted city events and new business openings with an enthusiasm, enthusiasm that demonstrated her love for the community. And whereas Councilmember LaRoche, LaRoche's legacy includes helping the design of the city distinctive logo, and whereas Councilmember LaRoche has provided model service and leadership in support of the city's mission to improve and promote the quality of life for all Crystal citizens, and provide municipal services in a cost-effective, innovative, and a professional manner. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Crystal City Council, that the City Council offers its sincerest thanks to Councilmember LaRoche for her services and leadership. As a Crystal City Council Member representing Section 1, she has made the Crystal community a better place to live, work, and play, adopted this 21st day of February 2023. This is a resolution.
Do I have to?
I don't, I'm not going to make you.
Thank you. Can I abstain? I'll just say.
I'm looking for a motion on this resolution.
So moved.
John, go ahead.
So moved.
I'll second.
Therese? All members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay? Motion carries. We do have a plaque.
We have cake. That's what more could I want? Thank you. Oh, thanks so much. Thanks, everybody. Thank you. And I just prepared a few little words. It's just been my honor and pleasure to serve all of you in Section Ward, or Section 1, Words 1 and 2 for the past six years. I've really enjoyed working with residents and city staff to improve everything from public safety, update parks, business districts, keep Crystal affordable place to live, and build a more inclusive community. Thank you, city staff. And Troy, everybody, you're all amazing, talented, and caring. Crystal is so lucky to have you serve. Mark, where is Mark? He's out plowing already, isn't he? So, and also, to my fellow council members, thank you guys so much. I've learned so much from you, and my hope is you vote for an applicant, and I do hope we have more than two, I'm sure we will, to replace my seed. To please remember that we represent people from many cultures, backgrounds, faiths, and parties. We're a welcoming community to all and not just a group. So all voices should be welcomed and heard, including each other's. Above all, continue to be kind, and thank you so much. It's truly been an honor. Thanks. I'll miss you guys.
I will miss you. Any further discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I just wanted to say a couple things, just, just you've been really personable. Got to know you outside council meetings, that's been great.
We had fun at the airport open house.
We did, we had a ball. I think about that a lot. We had a good time.
Remember fueling the planes? That was.
That was great, wasn't it? Yeah. We were, we were having a good day that, that day. Just community focused, great asset to the community. There's a lot of things you're great at, but a big thing, like the questions you ask at council meetings, they're, they're awesome, so. There are so many, there's been so many great questions, I feel like, whenever you have a discussion almost on anything, you always have a really pointed, excellent question. I always learn from that.
I do, David.
Well, I'm getting that from you, because I see how.
Ask away, David.
Yep, yep. So I just wanted to point that out and let you know that, yeah, we'll miss you, and best of luck.
Miss you too.
Yeah, best of luck with the move and everything.
I'll see you at the open house.
Great.
Okay. I promise. It's one of my favorites.
Yeah, definitely.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Oh, I haven't had the pleasure of knowing you terribly long.
Two meetings. Three now, it was three.
But you, you were just the friendliest and most welcome person, and you just have a very welcoming, friendly, just aura about you, and you're leaving really big shoes to fill.
Thank you so much. It's, it's been an honor to work with you, Tracy. I have high hopes for all of you here together, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all working together, finding that common ground, and just remembering it's the residents we serve. And, and that's who we should be honoring and thinking about as we make our decisions too. Thank you.
Good. Anybody else?
Therese, hi, neighbor.
I'm going to miss you. I mean, we, we live in the same neighborhood. I see you walking your dog out my kitchen window.
I saw you walking by the house the other night.
I walked by your house too. I am going to miss you. You have been a really nice person to get to know, and I don't have any, any hard feelings about you beating me in 2016.
No, look what happened. Well, I remember Therese came to my door the next day after election, and we had such a great talk, and she said, I don't know what to do with my signs. And I said, keep them. There's an election in two years. Look what happened.
And then I got home, and she sent me flowers, so. Starting a, I think it was the card was, here's to the start of a budding relationship or something.
Something like that. I had to have.
I'm going to miss you, working with you, I'm going to miss you as a neighbor, and wish you the best.
Yes, and do keep up the step to it walks, if you can.
Oh, I, I should take that away from you.
Yeah.
That'd be a good idea.
Coming up in May.
All right.
When the snow melts, finally.
Maybe June. Hopefully.
June, yeah, great. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. I'd like to make a few comments. Nancy, you are a true professional. You know, you hold yourself so well. I, I'm just amazed at, at how you communicate, how confident you communicate. I, I'm going to miss you in so many ways, not just serving on, on this board, on the council, but all the things, all the things that we've done in the community, and, and how you reach out to the residents. And, and you are a resident, you've fought for the residents so many times. You and I have very similar, I would say, viewpoints in terms of what it looks like to serve the residents. You understand that we are here because the residents wanted us to be here, to serve them, not to serve any ego, not to serve anything that, that's outside of what the purpose of this position really is. I, I'm proud of, of all the things you've done throughout the years. There's so many. Not going to list them, can't list them. I'm going to miss you greatly. It was, it was a shock to see that you were leaving, and I'm glad I will see you moving forward. You're not moving too far away.
Not too far, and Walt already said we're coming back Wednesday nights to play.
Play pickleball in the summer? That'd be awesome.
And, yeah, open for anybody, by the way.
Yeah.
When do we start usually? Six o'clock? It's just whoever wants to show up at Becker Park.
Some people show up at six, six thirty, seven.
Yeah, they're playing when, when I get there already.
Yeah.
It's just, it's great, yeah. I look, I'll miss you too, but you've been a wonderful neighbor, bumping into you at Massacre Park.
Right.
You and your family have been, you know, phenomenal, and getting to know you guys, so thank you.
Yeah. Walt's been, it's been great getting to know Walt, too. He comes, he comes to all the city events, too. That's pretty good. Not all spouses will do that.
That's true. He didn't want to help me campaign, and I don't blame him.
Right.
It's not in his wheelhouse and in comfort zone, but yeah, he's great. I'll miss you too.
Yeah. It's not a goodbye, so I'm good, I'm good with that.
Nope. I'll be back off into his two events and things.
Next on the agenda are announcements. You have been very good at adding some things that don't make the announcement list, so we're going to have to step up our game as a council to make sure we're catching what's not getting on the announcement list. All right. I'll read those in the record at this time. Met Transit and Headman County will be holding a community open house about the Blue Line Extension Project from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Monday, February 27th, at the Crystal Community Center. So that's next week. The next council meeting will be Tuesday, March 7th, at 7:00 p.m. here at the Council Chambers at City Hall. You can attend in person or via Zoom. Crystal Council meetings and work sessions are open to the public. Current and previous meetings are available for viewing on our website, crystalmn.gov. Do we have any other announcements from the council?
Surprisingly, not for me. It's kind of quiet, it's that in-between time. We don't have the Family Fun Night in March that I, weren't able to put that together with Parks and Rec, unfortunately, but other fun events are being planned. So check Park and Rec.
So, yeah, good idea. And Met Council, by the way, I'm sorry, Met, Metro Transit is having that open house. We met last week on, on the Blue Line. They were showing some different options. There's basically three options that they're moving forward that will be probably, that will be highlighted at that open house. So if that's something you're interested in, please, please make sure you attend. The, the work session that we're doing immediately following this meeting is going to be having more conversations on what we, what we had at the work session last week, so if you're interested in staying for that, feel free to. Any other announcements? Yeah, go ahead.
Did we make a motion to commend Councilmember LaRoche?
Did we vote?
We did do that, okay. All right.
We could do it again.
I'm like, what?
Did we do it before? I think we did. Yes, you did.
All right.